First on our agenda, I made a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
No vote.
Mr. Blake, move.
Second.
Second, Ms. Taylor, all in favor? Next, we'll move on to our opening devotion tonight. And I have a little story for you tonight called Dirty Washing. A young couple moved into a new house. The next morning, while they were eating breakfast, the young woman saw her neighbor hanging the washing outside. That laundry is not very clean. She doesn't know how to wash correctly. Perhaps she needs better detergent. Her husband looked on, remaining silent. Every time her neighbor hung her washing out to dry, the young woman made the same comments. A month later, the young woman was surprised to see a nice, clean wash on the line. And she said to her husband, "Look," she smilingly, "I know how to wash correctly." I wonder who taught her this? And the husband replied, "I got up early this morning and washed our windows." And so it is with life. What we see when watching others depends on the clarity of the window through which we look. So don't be too quick to judge others, especially if your perspective of life is clouded by anger, jealousy, negativity, and unfulfilled desires. Judging a person does not define who they are. It defines who you are. Let us not judge others by what we think we know. Let us instead give grace and understanding to one another. From Matthew seven three, "Why do you look at the speck of sawdust in your brother's eye and pay no attention to the plank in your own arms?" And now I'd like to call on Nazir Ratliff, Annabelle Hogan, Edgar Amador Mendoza, Carson Brown, Jay Cranford, Trinity Simmons, and Juan Sanchez to lead us in our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America.
(Inaudible) The United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, folks.
Stay right here. Annabelle. You did a great job. Edgar. 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 And Edgar. Carson. Jay.
Thank you, Carson.
Trinity. Another girl. And Juan. Thank you.
Good job.
Guys, we've got to get a picture. Right there, sign the picture. All right, three, two, one.
Good job.
Next, we have recognitions on our agenda. And we're going to do a resolution of esteem. And Ms. Lynn Heps is going to help with that.
Is the family of Ms. Reynolds here? All right, this is the resolution of esteem for Bill Lamont Reynolds, whereas our government father and his infinite love and wisdom sought to call home Bill at Lamont's title on July thirty first, twenty twenty five. And whereas, for dedication to Montgomery County Schools, for many years as a teacher assistant, for a living testament of both integrity and skill. And whereas, their laws will be deeply built, not only by those listening to serve, but also throughout our entire community and county. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Montgomery County Board of Education, goes on paper, and says he has spent a real lot of regret and apologies. But a copy of this resolution, taken away with our families, a dedication of our deep sympathy, and then a copy of its name be filed as part of the permanent record.
Thank you.
And Mr. Blake was just telling us about her at Candor Elementary.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We bet on her bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to further recognitions, I'll call on Dr. Roseborough.
For our classified employees of the month, Troy Elementary, we have Miss Amy Field, and Miss Lorna Dibbitson, and we have Quaylon Correll. Both from Troy Elementary. Thank you all for making sure that I speak everything you can today and for your service. Troy Elementary, we greatly appreciate you. And also thank you for serving us. Our folks provided our due assistance. Thank you. Thank you. For my show, I'm doing a picture. Thank you. Come down. I'm not going to tell them this, or what you want to do. I want to think.
Just pop your phone in the car.
I love you. Go to. Stand by. You stand and go to bed with you guys.
Congratulations, ladies. Thank you.
From Page Tree Elementary, a classified employee of the month is Tavith Bass, which is coming up, and then Natima Ratliff. Thank you both, ladies, for your service and all that you do to our students and our teachers. Have anything that you need. We appreciate you. And we just hope you.
Good job. Okay.
And we have you all on the back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, our classified employees of the month are from West Middle, Ms. Danielle Green, coming up, and Ms. Ella Khan. The certified employee of the month. Congratulations, thank you. Especially for everything that you guys do. I've witnessed a lot of your work. And so we greatly appreciate your service for the community of Maryland and for your service for teaching and field. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you still come up. We'll go back to you. Come on, why? We'll get right with it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Our accountability department. For the ground award sign. I just want to go here and say something about our recipient for this month.
Montgomery County Schools successfully migrated from Howard School to Anthony Campus over the summer months. It's a significant achievement, they possible for the dedication of our accountability department and data manager at all eleven schools. The transition went exceptionally well, thanks to their careful planning, collaboration, and attention to detail. Sir, deeply appreciative of the hard work and long hours invested in your student's process. Their commitment to excellence continues to strengthen our visibility and serve students of them.
Congratulations to Tiffany and Accountability. They received that boots-on-the-ground award. And let me say you, it was no easy feat. That was Tiffany did the work. The work this department could deliver on making sure that our student information system was clean with. And so we greatly appreciate you. I know that the data managers appreciate you. And we did highlight our data managers throughout the district on our website. Congratulations.
Good job. Good job.
Good job.
Appreciate it. Wait, can I have a few?
I thought you earned it.
If you can't afford any more than that, I'll get you a white Porsche shirt.
I told him this thing when I left. I'm like, I've given y'all enough money. So unless it comes free to me, I don't blame you.
Oh, man. Next on our agenda. Next on our agenda is the public comment. And with no one signing up to speak, we'll move on to running number four, administrative reports and discussion items. And as soon as we get technology to work, we'll call on Dr. Jennifer Mason for exceptional children report. I'll take the question. I might just thank you.
Who's coming up?
Ms. Hems is going to come in. Congratulations.
Okay, that's Martin. Is that the button you didn't touch?
I think so, yeah.
I just didn't move the mouse, though.
Good evening. So we're going to talk about the exceptional children's updates today. We're going to start with the grant notification and talk about federal awarding agency, U.S. Department of Education, with the NC Department of Public Instruction, and the award date, September fourth, with the total amount of the subaward, which is eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-three, with an indirect cost of three point three six four percent. And next is going to be the DPI EC monitoring visit results. So this occurred by DPI during the time period of October through November, twenty twenty-four. And during this time, DPI conducted a monitoring visit. And during that monitoring visit, these are the results of the areas that needed to be addressed. Each section has subsections to explain. So initial evaluation, reevaluation. And under that is reevaluations, evaluation procedures, additional requirements for evaluations and reevaluations. The next section is eligibility. That would be child with a disability, evaluation procedures, specific documentation for the eligibility determination. Next section is IP development and implementation. Under that is definition of the IP, which is the Individualized Education Program. And then the LRE, which is the Least Restrictive Environment. And then placement decisions. So that's a really critical area. And that, we'll discuss that in some of the upcoming slides. Especially design instruction and related services. Under that is your FATE, is the Free Appropriate Education, public education, and related services. And then the piece of secondary transition. And that's where your transition services are. So that's a big component of what we do in NC is that secondary transition piece. The EC department and schools are working together to fix the noncompliant areas. So we're working together as a whole team. This is what, so going back to this right here with eligibility. This and initially evaluation right here, that caused this. So when DPI did the monitoring visit in October through November, they identified these two areas. But shortly after that, they also identified this. So indicator eleven is the ninety-day timeline. That's where we do child find and where we find students that might be eligible for special education services under IDEA. So we're talking about that here. IDEA requires the North Carolina NCDPI, through the Office of Exceptional Children, they monitor us. They monitor every district in the state. So they look at ninety-day timelines. And they enforce the implementation of the federal law, which is IDEA, to all of the public school units in the state. And part of that data collection for the state performance plan, annual performance report, the Office of Exceptional Children must notify all the PSUs, which was us, we're one of them, of any findings that are specific to compliance indicators, initiate corrective action. So indicator eleven talks about students who are referred and received a placement determination within ninety days. And that's where this comes in, also within that monitoring visit, right up here. These two. So I broke it down a little bit to talk about twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four and how we got here. So everybody in the state has to be at a hundred percent for indicator eleven. If you're not at a hundred percent, you're in a corrective action. The corrective action looks a little bit different depending on what your percentage is. So for this percentage in twenty twenty-three, you can look at here, and you've got a total number of children for which they were referred. So you've got a hundred and two students that were referred for special education services under the federal law. And then you've got the number of children that were evaluated. That was eighty-one. And if you look here, it says the total number of children determined not eligible. There was nine. So they had referrals. The team determined those students aren't eligible. Okay, so those are the nine. But then they have the total number of children determined eligible within a ninety-day timeline. That was seventy-one. Seventy-one out of these right here. But then you have one that was delayed. That is where you get this break from. See that ninety-eight point seven seven? That's what that means. Okay, so you had one. Not a hundred, but you're kind of doing okay. You got one. But now we're going to fast forward to twenty twenty-four. And you see here, we've got some problems. Fast forward to twenty twenty-four. We went from one to six. We don't want to slide, so we're, we got one, but now we're going up to six. So that is ninety point six three. So you've got your referrals at seventy-four here. And you've got your referrals for evaluation at sixty-four. Students not eligible, three. But the students that are eligible are fifty-five. But we've got ninety-eight point seven seven. It's down to ninety point six three. So that's why we're in the corrective action. Can we ask questions at this point? Do we have any idea as to why we missed these six? I mean, I know we've had a lot of empty open positions in the EC department. I know we've had changeover of directors. Do we know what has caused us to miss those six? So I've done a complete comprehensive corrective action plan that Dr. Roseborough has. And she's going to share that with the board members. Next slide is ensuring Medicaid reimbursement. So our department is reimbursed. We are funded partly for Medicaid. So what this says here is, North Carolina public school districts can receive Medicaid reimbursement for certain school-based services provided to students with disabilities who are Medicaid eligible and who have services that are in their IP. So it's very, very important. Medicaid is important to us. That's part of our funding. Okay? From December twenty twenty-four to July of twenty twenty-five, there was a ninety-nine percent decrease in Medicaid reimbursement. The EC department is working to recover lost funding during that time period. Here's a snapshot of what that looks like. So within the year, we can recover one year's worth of funding. So we are working in our department really hard to recover what was lost in this time period right here.
And we lost this because of lack of proper documentation? Why did we lose that?
We lost this because the previous director said not to bill Medicaid.
It wasn't lack of documentation?
No. She said not to bill Medicaid. So what we're doing right now is we're fixing this. But it's a lot. It's very time consuming. And we need to go back and do a year's worth of documentation.
Dr. Mason, is that a decision that the previous director has the autonomy to do? Or what kind of oversight should there be in making that kind of decision with this type of financial implications?
She did it. I can't speak for what happened. The next slide addresses the staffing audit and summary of findings and actions. So when I came aboard, I immediately looked at the staffing. And as a team, we conducted a comprehensive staffing audit across the department. We identified areas of both overstaffing and understaffing. And we determined significant cost-saving opportunities based on audit findings. So this was a team effort. The EC department got together as a team. And we talked about some of the areas based on your schedules, where staffing is dispersed within the district. And then I looked at what those contracts were in the audit. Some of those contracts. Preliminary estimates indicate the overstaffing cost of district a minimum of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. That is the savings that I address with the initial audit performed with the contracts. And this was with finance in EC. So I'm currently still working with finance and our department to refine projections over the coming months. But these recovered funds, what my goal is, as a leader, is to put these funds back into the students. Their instructional resources, the teachers that are mentoring disciples, and any of the teacher leaders and mentors. We need to come taking those and we're plugging them back into where they need to be. So the EC department has redeployed staff from overstaffed locations to support identified understaffed classrooms. And will continue to make adjustments as needed in alignment with state guidelines because the state directs how many students. They direct those student ratio. So we have to be in alignment with that. So those are the state guidelines for special education classroom size and teacher-to-student ratios.
Let me ask the question. The three hundred thousand dollars in savings, is that from, we had too many teachers? Or is it from contracts we had outside the district?
Great question. So the person that was in this position before me was funding contracted positions that we didn't need to contract. And I was with the team able to come in and look at IEPs. And we brought back those training that we were paying for outside contract training. We brought it back home because our team can train with DPI. So instead of paying money for other people to train, because we have the knowledge, I can do it myself with the team. So that's where we saved some of the money. With DPI. Regional consulting team. And you'll see that in the paperwork and the action plan for indicator eleven. There's a whole training plan that I put together, which outlines the methods that I use and how we bring it back to the district and how we employ all of our staff members in training. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mason, I do have a question.
Sure.
When you talk about teacher-to-student ratios and overstaffing, understaffing, is this the year that all elementary schools, self-complains moved? Students moved to Greenwood? And what was the additional staff that went along with it?
That's a great question. And I tried to get as much information as I could on that situation. But it was a little bit sketchy. So I can't really answer to what was done.
But as of today, November third, do the EC teachers at Greenwood, are they fully staffed? Do they have everything they need for those students?
We're currently working out those allocations with the education classroom size because it's not just face value. You have to actually dig down into IEPs. You have to know what those IEPs say and where those students may be placed. Not all those students need to be placed in a self-classroom. And that's what we're doing. Because when you have somebody knowledgeable, that can look at the IEP and say, hmm, that student might not need to be in an adapted curriculum room off of the diploma track. That student might need to be in a regular classroom. That impacts the classroom size. But if you don't have somebody knowledgeable in that area, they're all going to go into that classroom. So. So we're working on that right now. We're working on where those students need to be properly placed according to I E P. And then we are formulating the staff to student ratio. That's what we're doing right now. And we'll continue to be flexible with that because you have to be. With a special education, you have to be open and flexible with some classroom sizes and a teacher classroom ratios. That has to be studied all the time.
So we will be moving some of the staff around to make sure the staff is meeting the needs of the students. So right now, we're top heavy in some schools. And not so much in other schools. And they have great needs as well as more students are identified through our child find process. And we also will be giving some training on autism and Asperger's for our district. Because, you know, we need to train up to have a team, most districts have a team to respond to those needs of their community. And so those are things that we're currently trying to get in place. And as Dr. Mason stated, it's taken all of our principals, the district office team and our E C D P I team to help us make sure that we have a healthy exceptional children's department and that I can really get the services that they need.
We are in constant collaboration with the principals, school administrators, working with that team with, together as a team for these allocations. If there's a need, we post for a teacher. We do what's in the best interest of students all the time. If we've got students that are new, we work directly with those schools and we make sure that the students have exactly what they need. And the teachers too.
Well, just a comment. One of the things that we noticed on our visits is the amount of students that were receiving speech online. And I don't, I know that's the way that some things are going. But I think the group of us, of course, and you probably do as well, prefer a face to face. Because the time that we observed that, we didn't see any, any interaction as far as the student or even an adult with the student while the speech was going on. So definitely, if you could just put that on your radar for us.
Yes, we would appreciate that. And I appreciate that comment. And we are working diligently in our department to make sure that our students have all the services that they need for related services. As you know, it's face to face is, it's not just our district. It's the entire, not just the state, it's the entire nation. And while it's not ideal, we have to provide services for our students based on their I E P. And we do understand some of the difficulties. We're working very hard to make the best possible services that we can for our students. With our administrators.
Does that change, just curious, does that change how I E Ps written for digital needs?
No.
It doesn't. Whether it's virtual or face to face, it doesn't?
That makes it how we post it for this speech therapist. I've been working with H R. We've had conversations and we're talking about how we can best serve related services and other areas. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to finance. Ms. Michelle Brighton.
Hi, Ms. Bray.
How are you all?
Very well.
Oh, wow, first day, sorry.
You're good.
I'm just pushed down. Am I going?
Dr. Shaw was a helper.
So we have the first budget amendment for the year, which is some additions to the budget resolution that made provided last month. We were able to, through allotments and revisions, we received some funding through the state. Capital outlay, federal and also Fund Eight budgets for the state. We were able to increase our budget by thirty one thousand five hundred and six dollars. We had some increases and we were able to do a agency transfer, which moved money positions from O one to pace as our international teachers. So that was nine hundred eleven thousand three hundred seventy five dollars. We did receive an allotment for principal bonuses. S G R T three forty eight, that was seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty four dollars. We received P R C O seventy eight, which is digital learning fund for computer programs, computer software. Fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty two dollars. And then we also received P R C O eighty seven, stock farm camera funding in the amount of five thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars. We didn't have any changes to our Fund Two local money. But we did have an increase in our federal funding. We were able to increase it one million nine hundred and sixty six thousand ninety nine dollars and eighty five cents. A lot of them in the top section were carryover balances for our fiscal year twenty five budget. We, you know, we have to finish our spending by September thirtieth for the federal and then carryover. But that, these were some adjustments to that. So eighty nine dollars and twenty six cents to P R C one eleven in year twenty five. That's Title Three language acquisition funds. Ninety one thousand two hundred and seventy three dollars and eighty three cents increase to P R C one oh nine, which is rural and low wealth income school funding. Eight hundred thirty three dollars and forty cents to P R C one oh eight for year twenty four, and that's student support and academic enrichment. Six hundred eighty six dollars and eighteen cents to P R C oh fifty, and that's year four, and that's Title One money. An increase in P R C one oh eight for year twenty five of twenty seven thousand seventeen dollars and eighty six cents. And that's student support and academic enrichment again, just different years. P R C one oh three, year twenty five, with one hundred and thirty thousand seven twenty and sixty cents. That's Title Three, improving teacher quality. And you see two hundred and sixty five thousand one ninety nine seventy two increase in P R C oh, which is year twenty five, that's Title One budget. And these have been built, the ones there at the bottom are all for this current year twenty six. We increased P R C one oh eight, which is student support and academic enrichment by ninety two thousand seventy six dollars. One oh four, which is language acquisition, thirty nine thousand seven hundred and ninety three dollars. And then P R C one oh three, which is Title Three, that's one hundred and fifty four thousand eight hundred and thirty five dollars. And we also received Title One, year six, of one million one sixty three five twenty five. We had some capital outlay projects that we received funding for. The yellow bus lease payments, that was P R C one twenty, that's thirty eight thousand eight hundred and six dollars. And in the past, these projects has an extension to it. So it just kind of distinguishes this new project. It's the same P R C, but the addition to it changes the type of project. So eight oh two point twelve was five thousand one hundred and forty five dollars and sixty three cents. That's going to be used to replace the fan motor and the chiller at Star Elementary. We have P R C eight oh two thirteen, four thousand ten dollars and seventy nine cents, which was used for the drive wheel on the Tomcat floor machine at Green Ridge. Four thousand twelve dollars and fifty cents in eight oh two fourteen, which was to replace a snapper lawnmower engine for the district. P R C eight oh two fifteen was two thousand three hundred and fifty four dollars. And that was used to trim the trees in the front loop, the M L A, for the busing purposes. Eight oh two sixteen, that's two thousand eight hundred and thirty eight dollars and seventy three cents. And that was for the fire alarm dialer at West Middle School. Then we have another increase in Fund Eight, Magiera Grant, four hundred and forty seven thousand nine hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty cents. And that's all the budget increases, which increased our budget by two million five hundred and eight thousand three hundred and forty seven dollars and seventy. And then I didn't scroll down, I apologize. My apologies. But that would be increased. And we also have it listed out for you in the file. But our fund and hospital.
Thank you, Ms. Bray.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Then we have one more.
Mr. Davis, you're not going to ask for call?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have also a need based full public school grant capital fund. And this is where we can request ninety five percent of the funding. And we have to match the other five percent. So we did complete a project for a roof replacement at Kendra Elementary. So we're requesting from the county, we're putting the note show on a needs based grant, five thousand four hundred and fifty three dollars and fifty two cents. And I've attached in the agenda, the application for the request. And it requires the board chair signature. And then we also have to get a board chair to enter the county of the number. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll call on Dr. Roseborough.
This is the superintendent's update for November third. We'll start off with our low performing schools plans. This is a reminder to the board that identification for low performing, local school administrative units, that the State Board of Education should identify low performing schools and administrative units on an annual basis. And so today, we'll be reviewing our second half of our low performing school plans. Once they've been identified as low performing under this section, this is a reminder that we can take the following actions of retaining the principal, kicking the principal with a plan of action for increasing student improvement or look for other means of leadership within the district that they cannot be transferred to another low performing school. We have district improvement goals in place for the upcoming school year. All of our school goals are aligned to our district goals for the year. And we also have measurements based off of our long-term goals for each student group with an overall goal of increasing student achievement across the board in this school district. We have already sent out our parent notification on the plans that will be presented today. We sent those letters out on October first, twenty twenty five. And this is a reminder to the board that within thirty days of receipt of the preliminary plan, which will be on December first, that we can either vote to approve, modify or reject the plan for the district and or individual schools. This is a reminder of the timeline of the state designation timeline, stating that December first, all plans must be approved by the local board of education. Tonight, we will have low performing school plans from Troy Elementary, Page Street Elementary, West Middle and East Middle. And then we will make a recommendation later on this evening for us to consider approval of all the preliminary district improvement planning goals, given that the school district has been designated as a low performing school district. And also consider approval of low performing school plans for Kendra Elementary, Presley Ridge Elementary, Mount Billyard Elementary, Troy Elementary, Page Street Elementary, West and East Middle Schools. Okay. So I've got to close out and I'll come back up to finish my update. And I believe we are starting with Troy Elementary. And tonight, Ms. Tracy Sargent will come up and present on behalf of Troy Elementary. Ms. Bell is under the weather and soon her remarks. I am going to conclude on present.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, Ms. Bell, I'm not feeling well at all, so just come sit down and see how it goes. So I guess the goal of any school is to get better, right? Each year, we look at data, we look at numbers and we try to make sense of those so that we can make sure we're making the best decisions for our school that are going to benefit not only the students, but the district as a whole. So we have a plan. And we want to, you know, improve student performance. So our goal this year is by June, we're going to have those K two babies growing, especially in reading. So we're looking at our in-class being at sixty seven percent. We want to increase that to at least seventy three percent as a whole. And when we looked at, you know, our trajectory, and I'll show you some charts on the next slide, we've got our work cut out for us. But, you know, we've gotten the second piece of our new curriculum this year, which is the skills portion. And, you know, we've let land fall to the wayside. So if what we're doing now is any indication of where we're going to be at the end of the year, I think that seventy three percent is very attainable. Our staff have talked about how they've enjoyed seeing the growth that the students are making. And with progress monitoring, especially at the kindergarten level this year, we're making sure that we're seeing growth before if we haven't quite started interventions yet. So another way to help our students improve is for the educators to improve. So we have to make sure that we're prepared. So we're going to attend trainings. We're going to go to professional development. Because we got a new math curriculum, so we're all B T ones, if you think about that. It's brand new to all of us. So there's a lot of learning to do. But we want to see an overall growth in math proficiency from forty one percent to forty seven percent. And we kind of stuck with that six percent even like, I guess when we were discussing it with the team, the goal is to kind of grow three percent every year. But we think we can do more. So we kind of raised the bar for ourselves and we'll see in my life if we're on the right track. Okay, so first, we're going to look at our reading data. We've got three school years here. So the light blue is twenty two, twenty three, which this is the year that Ms. Bell and I, the year before Ms. Bell and I came to Troy. Then we've got twenty three, twenty four and twenty four, twenty five. We do tend to have a kind of a lowering number there. I mean, it's pretty obvious. We're growing those Kinder babies really, really well. And then we're kind of dropping off in first grade. Um, and luckily this year, second grade um attributed a lot of their growth to um the CKLA uh because of the writing and the vocabulary. So um I feel like when we looked at what was going well with um second grade, and if you visit our schools and you see the work that they display on the wall, it's very evident that these kids were writing. So um we wanna keep that uh going. We wanna make sure that in first grade, we haven't kind of lost base with the writing. Um, so that we can make sure that they're even better prepared by the time they get to second grade. Uh, but one thing we did find interesting is that we we report in-class data to the state. I-ready data is just something that we use like on a weekly, monthly basis to kind of help us know, um, you know, what trends our students are showing or where we maybe need to beef something up. But when we look at these, uh, it's really hard to tell which one's which. So um our I-ready data could be an indicator of our in-class data. And because we have I-ready every day, if we were using that supplementally, then our in-class data should continue to rise. And I I think we've realized that now. Um, and so the goal is to make sure that that's happening. So what are we gonna do and what are we good at? So uh it's nice that when we look at this chart, you know, we are, we're above that fifty percent. We wanna be closer to, you know, eighty. It it'll take some time, but I think we can get there. So that is a strength. Um, this year, we don't have any BT ones or BT twos in the classroom. Um, my first year, we had, I think, four, actually, it was six, but three in one grade level alone. So um, you know, we're kind of getting there, right? Uh, we don't have that now. We um, we just have a BT in the EC department. So um, we're, we're trying to train them upright. Um, and uh, we do and have since Ms. Spell, and I'm not sure what happened before Ms. Spell was at Troy, but each year we um have conversations with the staff in regards to EVOs and let them know which type of student um they tend to grow the most. Because we, that information helps us know, you know, if we're kind of leaving a a subgroup out. Uh, we wanna make sure that if we're really good at the low babies, that we're not neglecting those high babies and vice versa. So um, we have those conversations, and I think it helps the teachers realize the value they have and who they can collaborate with uh in regards to raising a certain type of student uh proficiency. Um, so we do have some room to grow, uh, we we know that. Um, it is our second year with CKLA, so we're still full steam ahead. We're trying to do that to fidelity. Um, it is the first year with the skills portion. So while, you know, I guess the way I like to think about it when we get a new curriculum, you know, that first year, you're learning it too. And then that second year, uh, it it starts to come a little more naturally. And eventually, you know, you're like an old pro at it. Um, one thing we did notice when we were looking at our data is I'm a data person. I wanna know, you know, why i- if we're sending babies out like this in kindergarten, you know, the numbers don't stay the same for the next year. So if we went from seventy-six to fifty-four, what's happening? We're not becoming less intelligent, right? Our students aren't becoming less intelligent. We can't blame it on that summer slide because we're looking at end-of-year kindergarten to end-of-year first grade. And if there's not enough growth, then those students um haven't met that growth threshold, obviously. And it's not that they can't read. What we have discovered is that, and I would love to have conversations with any of you separately on this because it's like blowing my mind. Um, we have babies that perform in the blue all year, but they will not have met growth. And the reason is, once you learn how to read, this part of first grade no longer comes easily. You're not gonna just instantly go act when you can read the word cat. And in first grade, a large portion of that test is for you to break that word into isolated, like, peanut, like, each sound. Once we top limbs, that's really hard to do. Like, I I mean, it would be really hard for us to think about how we learn to read. You just do it automatically. And in first grade, not only do they have to grow six reading levels, but they also have to remember how they learned to do this part, and it's hard.
What's the rationale behind this?
In class.
The reason behind go, having to go back and.
But they need to know their sound for any language. Any language, you've gotta know your sound. So we can give that line for a language while I know their sound for that language.
That is, that's the rationale. Um, but I think that if the state, if enough of us got on to the state or wrote to the state or whatever, that once a student perfects this, if this part were to go away, then all this that's blue means I'm reading. So do we need that testing rate? But we can't fix that. We just have to do what the state tells us to. So um, the way, well, actually, we can fix it. And this is what we're gonna do. Every first grade classroom, whether their students are reading at grade level or not, they are going to implement breaking the words, CVC words, into syllables, five words a day before they start the skills component, so that the core, everybody's getting it whether you need it or not, because it's our high babies that are the ones forgetting to get it. Like, they're beyond it. And so it's not gonna hurt them to hear it every single day. Um, one of the other things that we haven't been doing is progress monitoring um in the LNF or the PSF, because the kids are beyond that. So they're not getting that practice every ten days or every twenty days. Um, so that when it is time to take that test, uh, it it's not the, it's not their go-to. So we're gonna practice every day that they're with us in first grade so that it is their go-to and see if that correlates, um, which I think it will. Uh, that's the plan. All right, math. Well, I didn't get to this part, so how are we gonna uh address learning gaps? We are gonna progress monitor that PSF until those teachers and kids are tired of it. Um, and then we're gonna have whole group core remediation because if, you know, we're looking at eighty percent of the kids in the red when we start something, um, that that's gonna be a core problem. We did a, you know, that's that's a core problem. And if our core isn't good and I guess focused enough, if it's not intentional enough, then it doesn't matter what type of intervention we're doing. It's not gonna be effective. So our first step is the core. And we are lucky to have a brand-new curriculum in reading, a brand-new curriculum in math. And once we learn it and give it its due diligence, um, we're gonna see nothing but scores come up. I mean, there's kind of no way to go but, but uh. Uh, and then we're also gonna bring data to our PLCs and data meetings. Instead of like me sitting around nerding out on like numbers, we're actually gonna have teachers bringing it in, and we're gonna look at why kids aren't doing something um or what it is that someone else does great that they could help this person remediate or reteach before we just jump to intervention.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So if I'm reading this data correctly, the kids that were in kindergarten in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three were at seventy-seven percent.
Oh, you're in math?
I'm in math, yeah, I'm sorry. And two years later, there is um twenty-seven percent? Oh, twenty-one, sorry. So in two years, they dropped fifty-six.
Yes.
What do you attribute that to?
Well, I attribute that to not having a a dedicated testing environment for I-ready testing. So I-ready is the, is the only math data that we present to the state. So when I walk into a room to do uh an observation or a walkthrough and someone, you know, a a child is walking around with a computer like this, and I say, hey, buddy, what are you doing? Oh, I'm doing my I-ready test. That is not conducive to uh good results. So I think sometimes in the elementary arena, we lose the fact that just because we have, we don't have the OGs, doesn't mean that we don't have to treat these tests like an EOG. So the environment should be quiet. Um, you know, the kids should have earphones that work. Um, those things need to be checked before we say, okay, we're gonna sit and do our I-ready testing. We also need to remind staff that it doesn't have to be done in one day. Um, it can be broken into multiple sessions. So those are things that I've observed over the two years that I've been with Troy that I feel like we can implement to make a difference.
Cause when I look at this, they got to be harder to, harder to teach in kindergarten than they are in second grade because it's the first-year school for them.
It is.
So what's amazing is seventy-seven percent at kindergarten.
So thirty-six in first grade?
Yeah, and then twenty-one percent in the second grade. So is that teachers? Is that, I mean, it can't mean you're walking around stuff because they're walking around in kindergarten.
Well, not during testing. Kindergarten is our only grade where they sit, where they sit and they take that test, and that's all they're doing because there's two people in the room. So we get to first grade, um, and I will tell you, we did have six BTs when we look at this drop. We did have six BTs um that year. Um, but we also lost, I, and I'll, I'd be a structural facilitator. I will tell you, I was new, um, and my focus was not math. Like, I'm a reading baby. That's my thing. So um, when we were having conversations in PLCs, most of those were focused around reading and that type of data because, oh, we're, we don't have a math curriculum. We're gonna get something. Everybody's using something different. Oh, I wanna do what this person's doing, or, oh, somebody at that school's doing that. Um, so I think there are a lot of factors uh in having two years to notice that, you know, math has to be a focus. Um, we are gonna put some things in place. The same that we're gonna do with progress monitoring for uh reading. So what are our next steps? So we're gonna have I-ready testing rooms um that are a, a, I guess, a, a testing environment. And the expectations are gonna be uh told to all staff and it's like expected. Like, I don't wanna walk in a room and you've got three kids over here in the floor. Oh, sorry. Um, we're gonna do walkthroughs uh during math blocks and not just reading. Um, but we're also gonna plan um vertical teams so that staff know what's coming next. Uh, but we're excited about having a new curriculum. And we just need to, I feel like, put as much focus in math as we do in reading. All right, and there's a lot of things we could celebrate. I know I've been up here talking for a long time. It's my, it's also my first time and I just, you know. There's that. You guys worry.
And thank you for stopping.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you.
You did an excellent job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have. Mister Trans. We need help closing that one out. Put your right hand lady up.
Close that one down. Thank you.
It's important that you know your weaknesses.
It would be mine, too.
All right, so this is our, our data presentation.
Yeah, that was true.
Does it want the new data ever back? I had a few things today, those should be. Yeah, okay. All right, so we have our, our three signals that are related to with the county, uh, boy, these are our main performance indicators. We have nine performance indicators altogether, but these are the ones who are how I wanna focus on this tonight. Um, when they center around improving our um overall efficiencies. As you can see, by twenty-twenty, we wanna go up a record points, um, fifty percent in reading. We're already only fifty percent with the math. We wanna increase that by ten points by twenty-twenty. Uh, science, we're also already over, which is not listed up there. We wanna increase that to about fifty-eight percent proficiency, up to about sixty-four percent proficiency. And we also have an opportunity gap, and we'll, we'll talk more about that later if we wanna try to get more families.
Mr. Sargent, before you get any further, let me ask you a question, Dr. O'Farrell. And and maybe I'm, I'm not remembering correctly, but in the data that the young lady just showed us about uh Troy Elementary, reading was ahead of math by significant number, right? But here we're seeing math is ahead of reading by significant number. What do we attribute that to?
Instruction.
Instruction.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, it's, it's the testing environment.
It's the testing environment.
Okay.
Our math data doesn't show what our kids are probably able to do because it's just not a good testing environment.
There can be expectations and accountability.
Right, but that's gonna change this year.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a simple thing there.
If you look at two, if you go to our data on the reading. So our, you know, our third grade brought us down a little bit. Um, I contribute that to maybe not being used in testing environment. But if you look at our, RTA is not included on here. RTA, if you include RTA percentages, we're about forty-five percent proficient. That's not included. So the taste, when they do the retest, we do the RTA, we had eleven students pass the RTA, which brought us calling forty-five percent proficiency. Maybe look across the board, we'd be about forty-five percent proficient. Not where we wanna be, we wanna be high, but that was, but it's lower than that. So um, so the data can be a little skewed that way. But as you can see, our third, our third grade would be one of our main, there is one of our main areas of focus. We tried to add some to not getting used to that testing environment. It's not anything that Troy's doing, just the fact that they come in, that's their personal age adjustment taken in third grade. So we're trying to do things to share with everybody and move the debate forward. If you scroll down, if you look at our data review, um, obviously, we wanna, we, we increased our third, but even though it was low, we still increased in third grade and fifth grade, you know, G proficiency increased. The the wind block, you'll see on a lot of these slides, um, it's the what I need block. And what we've done, that's our intervention block. Um, you can call it wherever you want to, but what we do during that period, I'll probably explain that a few more times is the kids are on I-ready, they're either gonna be on their path or a sign path by the teachers, but we'll also pull the small groups during that time. So fifth grade this year, we're doing something interesting. We made a dedicated wind block for an hour fifteen minutes where we have two teachers. We have our title-one tutor in there, and we have our teacher in our classroom. And they have pulling small groups every day, two, three small groups per session. The rest of the class is working on the I-ready data and the boost. And fourth grade and third grade, they wanted IXL, so we got the IXL um trial, tried to get success in IXL last year. We didn't get it this time this year, so we're gonna get it back, but add it to our wind block. But that's kind of like your remediation acceleration block that they're doing in all grade levels, uh, third, fourth, and fifth. But the fifth is an interesting one because it's a whole separate block. And we're having a lot of success so far in my class. And we've got a retired teacher, a title-one manager, they come out and slip the cover, who is at Troy for a long time, she's been in there and she's just, it's actually had a reputation for places. She's doing a nice job with that. And we also have communities in schools, if you look on there, our strengths, we have, they come in and they do two-day in our school, and they're pulling third. and they're pulling third, fourth, and fifth grade students, and they're working in small groups. It's a small number of students, but if you have, I look at our data from that last year, every student that was went into that CIS tutoring, they increased, and seven out of eight were proficient last year from that tutoring session. This year, we're actually piloting a math program that comes from CIS, so we love to have these CIS in our room, they're doing outstanding job for us. Um, obviously, opportunities for improvement, if you look down there with our, our, some of our subgroups, um, our lowest subgroups, it's always, you'll see S W D students with disabilities, overall, the schools were at sixteen percent. But um, if you look at the data, um, the students with disabilities, we're talking, we're gonna be looking, if you see the public on that, we're looking at possibly, uh, we pulled students out now, and I wanna look at, obviously, the students ability. Uh, looking at the students who needed to get pulled out, but make it into more of a one-on-one setting, but to alleviate that pressure, we're looking at a push-in model with every senior teacher, because I feel that they would pull out at core time. And I wanna get those students that are closer to the proficient level in the classroom, so they're not getting pulled out at core time. So that's something that we're looking at to try to help push that, look at our lowest subgroup, obviously, is our students with disabilities. Um, if you look at fourth grade reading, we did, we decreased by two percent, that's probably one, two students, but it still is a decrease from forty-five to forty-two percent. Um, we obviously want to increase, we actually just need cohort data on that one. Um, obviously, you hear a lot about this, our core instruction, we wanna get our core instruction up to almost the NTSS pyramid, where you want eighty percent of our students being reached by the core instruction, and we're not quite there yet, so we're gonna keep strengthening our core instruction. Um, and we're gonna go on, on other slides, I'll explain anymore how we're gonna do that.
Let me interrupt you, what does GLP stand for?
Um, grade level proficiency, sorry. Grade level proficiency, sorry about that.
Sorry.
We tried to, we were gonna put an acronym explanation.
For those who listen. Efficiently, we would appreciate it.
So strengthening core instruction, you can see like what we're doing, if you come into our building, and what we're doing, obviously, with the amplify CKLA, which is the ELA um, curriculum, they were using now. Um, our standardized, like, standard aligned lessons, and they're doing that, I want to thank the county for just purchasing the plan book, so all of our teachers are excited to use the plan book. We had probably ten out of our fourteen students using it already. But plan book is an awesome lesson planning tool that just makes, it's just, you have to come see this, I wish I was back teaching. The I-do, we-do, you-do model, which is a gradual release model, but that's, we're using that um, every day, every, every lesson we're using that, I think that's gonna help strengthen our core instruction. But I think the pro, uh, progress monitoring, what you heard, um, Tracy speak to, is the key, you don't know what we're doing, we can just teach all day long, we don't know if we're getting it, we don't have progress monitoring, so we have to make sure we're doing it every day, three, four, five times a day, anything, any standard instruction that the product's monitoring, that's what we're gonna make sure what we're doing. Uh, our targeting support, our target support, obviously, with our, our, well, the wind block, um, I think that's what we give more, back to, about to shrink those gaps. But um, the kids in fourth grade, third grade, especially fourth grade, are doing a really good job. I already talked to you about uh, I-Ready and our CIS tutoring. Our data decision, we have weekly data, if you come in a class in my PLC room, it's all data, teachers, if people have data notebooks this year, we have an online version, we also have a paper version of that. Um, but every decision we make in class is when we do the data, what the kids need, be their data, not what we think they need, but what the data says, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna, that's the gap. If you look at math, we've had a little bit more success with math, and we can attribute that, I think, more, uh, obviously, teachers, we've had no teacher turn over for two straight years. I mean, they love page three, it's a pretty good environment, if you wanna learn, you're involved in it, so. But um, if you look at our, our trend data, even though we dipped a little bit in fourth grade, once doing session, again, we wanted to be fifty percent, we thought we were gonna get fifty percent last year. Um, we dipped there, we're right there on, on, on the cusp of it. Third grade last year just shot right out, sixty-five percent proficient, um. And we did, I think part of that, we'll, we'll get on our next slide, is we started to partnerize a little bit in third grade in two of our classrooms, I think that teacher becoming more familiar and just teaching, that's what I do is teaching math. I think that's helping with the third grade math, so. And that was our, that was our highest test area last year, was third grade math. Yes, really, teachers. Um, here's our data review again, our strengths, third and fifth grade math, I get, I partnerize math, even though they partner up, they pair up, so they go to one teacher for ELA, one teacher come out. When two of our teachers do that, and one teacher does the self-intel model, um, this speech, but she just, they're so good with both of them, but we have our other teachers, one's a younger teacher, she gets to focus more on the ELA side of it, and one gets to focus on math all the time, so. We think that has a big effect, what, on our third grade data last year, because that was, that was fun. We did a third grade. Again, wind block, which I talked about, that's getting a little bit of personalized I-Ready. Plus pulling small groups according to what they need. Uh, I mentioned our CIS tutors again, um, two teachers in our, we could, that was sometime that we put in math, foundations of math training, what they went to. And one of our teachers was actually the second time they went through the foundation of math training, so I think that helps out, they came back and issued a lot of that. I'll attach that. Obviously, our areas of improvement, students with disabilities, I heard, lowest subgroup, um, but we're gonna focus on all our areas, I think, yeah, that's what the wind block is covering. But here, we're looking with our EC teachers, teacher, I should say, I'm trying to see who can push it into, who can pull out, I think all, will help with that. Yeah, our goal is to get over fifty, we want over fifty, I want higher than fifty percent, but I think we're really good, definitely in fifth grade. Um, I think we're really good, so I think, I think the teachers are, I think we're gonna hit it. Especially if they do Desmos math, thank you, the county for buying us that. The tool the teachers never had before, they've dedicated curriculum to math, it's right at their fingertips, they have the electronic version on it, they have the, the workbook for the students, and it makes it, it's right there, so the teachers can, we can use that along with other resources, but they have that standard, I think, which makes it a lot easier for the teachers, but kind of aligns with our curriculum map on page three, so. I think that's gonna be a nice job. This is the same slide you saw before, it's, it's essentially the same thing, except it says the Desmos on there, which is the math version of it, um, again, we're using I-do, reading, you do math, it's built for math, right? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do one for you, now we're gonna do one together, now you're going to do it, and I'm gonna walk around monitoring you while you're doing that, and just not monitoring, but monitoring what, a purpose, I wanna make sure this year we grouping properly. So you're walking around making sure and grouping, so that way they're doing an assessment as a class goes on, so we're out with progress monitoring at the same time, as we're delivering standards, so. I think this is the model you're gonna see in all the schools, but when you come into our school, you see these teachers doing this, whether they're assessing, it doesn't, it's not always super visible or dependent hands, you want dependent hands, but it might be executed, there might be other forms of assessment, so our teachers are doing a, a fabulous job on a daily basis. Um, you know, targeted support, we use our, somehow, Title One for the tutor, she's doing outstanding. Um, CIS helping out to share the pilot. And I think sounds kind of, I think we're just gonna do daily computations. And that mean a huge difference, do you remember that data when, two years ago, when we went to forty-nine percent in fourth grade? That, what computations are, is just the basic operations and using them, just having that quick automatic, automatic system called, where they, they can just split out four times four, and it's that quickness on it, so. Every one of our grade levels with a vertical planning, we're doing computations, I think, in fourth and third grade, they did it last year, fourth grade didn't do it, so I think fourth grade this year, we're gonna, just gonna push that, push that, it's just gonna be more automatic on the math. So they have those, those quick facts, so that they can take more time on the final exam. Um, we, and actually, we read the tune on as well, that they can actually concentrate on actually picking out what, or operations, and once they can pick out that operation, then they'll have a a quickness to do it, so I think that's a good deal. Science, we've always been pretty well in the science, if you look at our data. We dropped a little bit last year, but last year was the first year, it was a new curriculum, it was, it was, it wasn't field tested, it was just throwing up to the teachers, let them go, and Miss Jones is outstanding, um, she, she did a great job, and she's right there, she's right there, we, we expected maybe a little, even more difficulty, we didn't expect from behind, but she did an outstanding job. So Miss Jones is always monitoring the hands on, and going to the classroom. And you can see our strengths again, uh, above fifty percent new curriculum, you can go deal some of that other data, we're level fours, level fives. That's another area we've looked at more as our long-term goals, training those kids, not just the threes, but let's push them to fours and fives, so that they can risk, be in their long-term goals as well. Um, but again, our lowest subgroup again, well, we didn't have subgroups there last year, because it was the first year, but I can guarantee you, we've got students with disabilities, so that's our lowest subgroup, we're gonna try to get a hold of that. Um, obviously, opportunities for improvement to continue to develop lesson plans, um, improve our subgroups by improving science and wind block series, which we are doing in the fifth grade wind block. And, you know, we can collaborate with science PLC, monitor with the purpose of Miss Jones, they're an outstanding job doing that. Um, and using more formal assessments to plan, and reteach, she's doing more of that this year as well.
Yeah, let me interrupt you a second, is Miss Jones the only science teacher?
Yeah, well, so in fifth grade, we only, their only test is fifth grade, so they departmentalize, so we have a ELA, a math, science teacher, and we have that wind block too.
That's why she's doing a great job.
She does, she does.
She wants to.
She does, but if there's anyone that doesn't, I mean, she would be even more. She can teach, she can, I, I would actually like to have her teaching lower grade levels, but she just said, I don't wanna take her science. Don't wanna mess with something that's working, right?
Right. Does she, is she able to collaborate with other fifth grade science teachers in the district?
She does that, yeah.
They're all working together.
Yeah, she does, they do a really good job of doing that, um, but she is a generation genius, she uses some of the other tools, and she does a great job, if you ever come in a class, when she's always doing experiments, and we gotta come into the one that's, um, she does a digestive thing, where she squeezes the stuff, you know, these packets. I like it, the kids are just testing.
We also have a lot of success with uh, science fair, the last two years, we've had kids not only win at campers, but also go on to the state science fair, and our kids got to Miss Jones, and she encouraged that, worked with.
Cause one, one thing we do different, we don't, uh, we don't have every kid, we don't make them move. We don't force them to do science, but only kids that wanted to, so we've had more success, I think, doing math because they want to do it. We won't, I think about between eleven and fifteen projects turned in every year, but they're all high quality, but we're, we're tuned in. I think moving on, I think we're just, I'm probably taking too much time, but, um, so parent of mom, we think that's very important, um, so just real quick, you can read through this, but we, we're just, we're, our system is addressing this by trying to create more opportunities for parents to come out. We had a grandparents' day, which we had about a hundred and twenty family members come out to build the school, which was outstanding. Yeah, we actually got a little complaint feedback, there was two thousand, and our system got a little bigger venue next year, and they wanted different foods, we let them change the venue. But it was, it was a pretty good success. I always look at the change of venue, but uh, but we already have a lot signed up Thanksgiving every year at the full house, but if you look down at our next steps, we're gonna have a culture night this year. We're gonna have a science, the Duke, uh, the Duke Energy Science Night again, we, we got awarded that grant, or that, they're gonna send us the pack three, which is nice. And um, we're gonna do a career day, which we did last year, we have more parents in the building. And then we're doing some kind of a Valentine's Day dance, where it's gonna be kind of like that. Not, we don't wanna call it daddy-daughter dance, well, because we want, we know that some of our, our children don't have moms or dads at home, it's just gonna be great, something special, we'll be to the dance, turning people out to those who's in the building, see the good things that we're doing, stuff we should do. Um, there's just some pictures, that was grandparents' day, and that was a big success, we didn't know what was expected, it was, it was a big problem, true. Um, they all loved it. Some of our partnerships we have, we have two straight years, we've had to play sixteen, we, we luckily got there, the parents come out and work at the school. Um, you also see Brody out there, two years in school, which I always get with socks, or goldfish, or everything, um, and then uh, Montgomery Sensible does a great job, but that's, some, while some of their athletes from Valentine. Um, there's some of our awards, we're two-time defending, our Battle of the Books champions, we have elementary students placing the top three in the math competition. Um, we have best people at the state level competing from the science fair, we won the star, star heritage days, S A contest, we found, sold the way through star, but you know, it's all good fun. We want that nice little jar, jar, stick right there, so, but this is all some of our successes that we've had the last couple of years. Um, and then you can see our progress, and actually, it's not, so, though we've gone up every, that's our, that's our school-wide, uh, grade level, or school-wide proficiency, we've gone up every year. It's incremental, like I said, this year our goal is to get up over fifty percent of the school. But we, we feel that, I, I'd like to be at least the fifty-five percent, so, but you can see every year since we've been there, we've increased, and that's coming from someone that, that wants to work in a high school, so it's just like, Tracy, it took me about a year to be an acrologist at elementary school. Um, but history is outstanding place, and thank you guys for allowing us to present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
Your regional principal, uh, interviews or anything yet?
Well, they said on the thirteenth, there's, we're gonna find out if we're gonna select it, we understand the package, and we'll find out if we get selected.
A good one.
We'll see what happens, you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Polten. West Middle.
Good evening. Wanna thank you guys, first and foremost, for the opportunity to be at West Middle School, it's an amazing place, a lot of great people, great community, and amazing students, so. Um, wanna start off first with our, uh, school improvement goals, um, and aligning with, uh, the districts and increasing certain percentage every year. Um, you know, we're looking to increase our, uh, grade level proficiency in ELA from forty-three point seven to forty-eight point seven by the end of this year. Um, and then math from forty-four point six to forty-nine point six. Um, as well as our science, uh, which were one of our better performing subjects, pushing it to sixty-five percent, so. Uh, realistic goals, our teachers actually wanted, uh, to push for more, and they're gonna meet those goals, by the way, that they're working. Um, but these are, uh, the starting points for this school year, um, as we look to continue to build on some of the successes that we had uh, last year. Uh, here you'll see some of the trend data, uh, for ELA, reading proficiency. Uh, it's been, you know, a little hit or miss, uh, honestly, you can see some of the sixth grade, um, they love fifty percent, so at the heart of it, uh, you know, nothing that, uh, you know, anybody was, was truly proud of, but I think a lot of that was some inexperience, and then just aligning our standards, uh, as a whole, aligning our instruction to our standards, um, first and foremost. As well as seventh grade, you see a jump in there, but sometimes you'll have cohorts that kind of come in through, so really dive into who our kids are, but also the cohort that moved through, and then in eighth grade, um, as you see, uh, we, you know, we had a a very good ELA teacher, now a destruction facilitator, she's doing a great job at her elementary school, uh, I think we had, she had some really good success last year, about fifty-one percent proficiency, that's something that we can continue with, of course, you know, our seventh grade cohort going forward, but setting those goals, uh, but again, ELA is an area that we are going to really target, um, as you can tell, there's been a lot of inconsistencies over the years, so we wanna really tighten that up. Again, our eighth grade did hit over fifty percent proficiency, um, and as we talked, as the school and our school, you know, middle of the years, MOY, and our school improvement team really had discussion to start the year last year, to see what was needed, what areas are, uh, do we need to identify? Uh, and you know, while people throw out small group intervention, those are, are two different things, you know, one addresses standard, another would address deficits. Um, so we really wanted to hone in on some of the areas that our students needed, so we built in a flex period where we, uh, really, uh, spent some time diving into the data um, and seeing what gaps our students could, could, uh, we could really address, pushing in, uh, all additional support staff during that flex period. Uh, met regularly, and wanna, you know, highlight the work that was currently with our teachers during PLCs last year. Uh, we were able to re, uh, to increase our school level proficiency from thirty-nine to forty-three, but again, a lot more work to do, um, also with the new kind of curriculum, um, I think we kinda, everybody jumped in a full force, but uh, there was more need to ensure that we were teaching the standards from that curriculum, which is something that we're taking the time to do this year. Um, if you look at our, some of our I-Ready data, our tier-three students, which are at-risk, are highest students, they only decrease, which is an area that you wanna decrease, because that means that they show improvement throughout the school year, only, um, decrease to forty-eight percent, so again, ELA is a big, big area of focus for us this school year. And then our E V O S, uh, data, uh, as a school dropped eighty-two point nine, so up to, um, seventy-two, so our proficiency may have gone up some of that growth, um, and again, I think that's where identifying and focusing on specific gaps rather than uh, how students are accessing the grade level standard, uh, was an area that we saw, uh, for the greatest improvement. Um, when it came to ELA and our school improvement team, and also instructional leaderships. And then, um, West Middle School is, again, an additional targeted support and improvement school for our subgroup with disabilities, uh, with three new EC teachers, and working with, um, Dr. Mason, I know they're attending high leverage practice, so it's been how they support, uh, students with disabilities that are in the classroom while a whole group instruction is going on, to help them better uh, access, again, uh, the content, curriculum, uh, training that I myself am attending as well, just as the leader, I have to make sure that I'm growing in that area myself, not just at that expectation, so I appreciate the district's support. Um, our ELA, our next step, like I said, that's a big area, and you'll see our indicators that align with the indicators uh, at the very end, at the district, shared at the very beginning. Right at the beginning of the year, using our I-Ready data, we create our core plan, so what are the biggest chunks and how we teach? Uh, what are the biggest areas that we can do, rather than just focus on the small areas? Uh, I already showed it, that our vocabulary was, uh, an area for, uh, big improvement, so we're talking about how we can truly, uh, you know, when you say vocabulary instruction, there's a lot that goes into that, so what does that mean? Uh, and having those discussions and pushing, um, our teachers and who are working, uh, you know, extremely hard right now. And then, of course, as mentioned, you know, we do have district resources, uh, this year, we do have the full suite for I-Ready, so it allows for more access to teacher resources, um, so just because you give people resources, doesn't necessarily mean that the program is what changes, that the teachers do. So giving them that time at PLCs, a common planning, to make sure, again, we're starting with the standard, and then amplify CKLA, the address in that standard. Those are next steps that we're taking for ELA, uh, at West Middle School. Our math proficiency, again, you know, below fifty percent, you know, regardless of where our kids come, you know, we have higher. Our math proficiency, again, you know, below fifty percent, you know, regardless of where our kids come, you know, we have high expectations, we will continue to do so. Uh, our sixth grade, uh, we have, uh, we've had a strong team, even with some transitions, we adjusted our schedule, put people uh, in their strongest areas to have the quickest turnaround. Our seventh grade, we have uh, we partnered with M C E P S to have one of our new teachers, international teachers, just to make sure that she's um, having some direction. But at the heart of it, you know, I really want to highlight the work that our instructional facilitator doing with their, the late evenings and planning with her to help our new teacher got to fix some of those, again, some of those inconsistencies. And then our eighth grade, we have a person that's a veteran teacher. She actually looped up with our students, seventh to eighth grade, so she was able to pick up early and hit the ground running and asking, again, cut into some of that time, um, where our students need to be. But not an area that we're overly proud of, but we saw some areas of strength, uh, that we can build off in this school year. Going back to I R A, you do see um, two pyramids there. Um, I want to highlight that one of our subgroups, looking at our school report card, did meet their long-term goal, and I want to give this uh, my favorite a shout out. She's an ESL teacher, she mentioned pushing to the math classes, you, um, and E L A as well, and I met with them before and after school, so I want to thank her for some of that. Um, but again, a lot, a lot of work to do. But our tier three students, we did drop that from fifty-one percent to forty percent, that means our highest need students. We dropped that by ten percent last year, so we did some good things in uh, in, in, in math last year, and then our tier one increased from nineteen to thirty-two percent. We got students closer to grade level based on I R A. Um, again, not where we necessarily want to be, but there were a lot of areas that we could build on this school year. And then growth, uh, you know, fifty percent of our students are at tier three based on I R A data this school year. So that's an area that we're uh, we're meeting actually today to kind of gauge our progress as an instructional leadership team. Geometry is an area across the board that we're weak at, so something we want to continue to discuss. I think we're talking about some number sets and a few other items that we can make sure we're spiraling in and reviewing. So being very intentional with what we're doing and our instruction, because we don't have a lot of time, and we're this behind, uh, we're low performing, uh, you know, every day counts and every day matters, but we don't have.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What, what grade level is geometry taught now?
It is, the standards is touched on in a couple of.
Every grade level.
It's not, yeah, it's not one grade touches on.
Unless you were smart enough to take it. Some of us have to wait till our junior.
I'm trying to add some practical steps uh, with, with our staff. Uh, I think one thing the staff's done outstanding job, they work hard at West Middle, I think, just sometimes just working hard at too many things, just make sure that we're aligned and moving in the same direction, uh, we'll see our biggest growth. Uh, one area that we have identified, just looking at our school report card, is E D S, economically disadvantaged students. So they're low performing, underperforming in all grades, so that's an area that we want to discuss, see how we're supporting those students. Uh, but again, gradually, uh, trying to make sure that our teachers who, uh, you know, at the heart of it, they're the ones who bring about the real change. Making sure they feel supported as we continue to uh, to push them. So using some of our resources, we'll uh, create our student groupings, um, and our P L Cs, which we have weekly and sometimes twice a week, depending on what day we have coming, coming in. We also have our dear math tutors, uh, they're providing remedial support using I R A. Again, everything is about the standard, we're teaching the standard versus just where the child at. We do identify those gaps, but we want to make sure that they're accessing the standards, so at the end of the day, that's what the state is gauging, whether they're proficient or not, or whether they're ready for the next grade. And then we do have, uh, since we are targeted, additional targeted support in uh, where not only do we have targeted uh, tutoring, but uh, tracking uh, their effectiveness uh, as they work with their students with disabilities, and we do have a retired administrator, retired teacher of the E L A in science, who's um, coming in three days a week and providing that type of support along with using, again, small group uh, resources from I R A. So everything that we're doing is all aligned, we're not all working in different directions. We're all moving in one direction together, and I think that that's really one of the greatest strengths that, that, that we're taking from, from last year. Our science, I want to give Miss uh, Ms. Wall the shout out, she was able to do this in half a year over the past few years. Uh, she retired and she wanted to go out with the, her highest scores, and she did in her career. So she was able to have a sixty-one point six percent proficiency last year, and this year we have another teacher who had a, a hidden strength in, in science. He just needed to discover it, so he's helping us out this school year. But I think one of the areas that we really want to highlight is the fact that we are a team, we all work together. Um, and we want to leverage our uh, C T E courses right now, we have medical technology, we have um, business law, and of course, health science, the P E. So what common standards do they have, and what can they expose our students to, you know, throughout the school day versus just in the classroom setting? Make sure that we're all kind of using some of the same language, um, as well as, you know, we'll switch C T E teachers with these middle of the year. So we have some math coming in with instructions, trade, some more math with uh, food and uh, nutrition, and just add some science background. So just making sure that throughout the school year, we're leveraging everyone and everything to make sure that we make the growth that we need. And then of course, hands-on learning, um, and what you see at the top is some of our ninth graders now, but Miss uh, Miss Wall makes sure that she did some really good uh, hands-on activities to reinforce learning. And that's a conversation that we had last year, was just, you know, we have to give our, I had a principal just say, you know, hands to head, hands to head, they have to give the information to the head, sometimes it takes the hands. So making sure that they, all students uh, have those opportunities, because they're like, so, different majors. And then, you know, areas of growth is just assessing our science standards, not waiting until they get to eighth grade, you know, not saying, hey, we have to get these kids ready from the beginning to the end, but how are we assessing the standard sixth, seventh, and eighth grade? And uh, one of the pictures on the side, you'll see our science fair students that went up to uh, U S C Pembroke, um, we also have a few this year, thanks to Paige Street, that went to uh, Pembroke. And uh, so again, aligning us as a district and make sure that they continue to succeed. But you know, those sixth graders or seventh graders, and next year they're going to be our eighth graders, taking the eighth grade O G, so again, planning and aligning everything long-term. And then of course, just make sure that we understand our new science standards and make sure that they're internalized by the adults. Uh, common vocabulary, we talked about next steps, our master schedule that we redid again, um, allowed us to find uh, some hidden talents. I want to put it that way for some people, would allow us to strengthen certain areas, uh, but students do have science daily now versus semester, so. That's going to give us really our biggest uh, our biggest growth opportunity this year for science. And then vertical planning across middle school and the district, there's a really good job of bringing science teachers together. And just a few highlights, uh, one area that we have uh, focused on the past last year and this year is P B I S. And of course, you know, behavior is not something separate, behavior and academics all work hand in hand, uh, along with social and emotional learning. So this allows our students to celebrate, not only are they well-behaved students, but encourage those to maybe get sent out on, spend a little more time in class, get a P B I S ticket. And our students this year have actually run the cart, they're running the program, we're just kind of providing um, their resources, um, to make sure that they have a lot of ownership. So this is them showing off uh, what the cart has very much is. Uh, most recently, uh, West Middle really does like to highlight student voice and student leadership, is something that they've done an excellent job of over the past several years. Uh, we've been snuck Dr. Mason in there as one of our uh, so our students plan the event themselves, will have uh, one for Black History Month and several months as well. Uh, Ms. Locker, our guidance counselor does an amazing job of meeting with students, they plan the events, we just kind of help make sure that it doesn't cause too much of disturbance, and logistically, we're all safe. Uh, and then they, they provide is uh, you know, if there's any allergies, we're made aware, but they've uh, provided a, a, a meal, a small meal, taste of different foods that was cooked at the store along with candy with donations, uh, and they celebrated uh, Hispanic Carriage Month. And as well, if you guys ever have a chance to stop in, our drama club, uh, they put on two productions last year, they're going to put on two this year in a student-led. We have an early college student coming down to help us and our students, but as an adult sponsor, the students take it on themselves. And again, middle school, the beauty of that is just helping kids find a niche as well, um, academically, but also socially. And then you see some of our uh, sixth graders now in uh, some of the health science classes, sometimes you'll see that, um, the dummy in the bed, trying to walk through the halls. I was alarmed the first time I saw it, because I thought we had an emergency, but it's a litigants class moving through. And then our E C self-contained class, uh, one of the things that they just started was a snack uh, cart on Thursday, and Friday they take orders and they deliver and just try and develop those uh, real-life skills and address some of the needs of the student R P S, um, you know, practically, and, and that they have a good time delivering. So those are just a few of the spotlights, um, from West Middle.
That's a lot of work.
And Mr. Robledo and Ms. Kearns are holding down West Middle because their assistant principal's currently out, so they've been doing a great job, yeah.
Well, listen, it's like, listen, I can't prepare tonight, baby. First of all, thank you guys for having us, um, uh, here tonight, uh, I'm the proud coach for East Middle School. Uh, I feel like we have a phenomenal staff, I, I love my support folks with Ms. King and Ms. Parsons, they're here, out past eight o'clock. Um, so I'm just here to, to have my back, but we're just going to talk a little bit about um, our performance last year and uh, projecting forward to this year and some things that we're going to try to do to improve our performance going forward. Um, I ju, I put our, our academic goals. Uh, we also, kind of like everybody else, we have a goal to increase uh, parent involvement and, and educated preparedness. But I just wanted to focus on the academic piece with our um, our E L A, our math and our science goals uh, for this year, and we look to just increase five percent. And when you, five percent doesn't sound like a lot, but when you, when you target it, when you take a hundred and fifty kids, which is about what we have in every grade, five percent, seven and a half kids, so we're talking, we're, we're talking about eight children, we're talking about twenty-four kids, more proficient in every subject uh, over the course of the year. So if you think about it like that, we're looking at those kids that are on the coast, or in the middle, when we look at our E V O S project, and then what are we going to do to help move those things forward? So looking at reading, um, what I, Janafy, I can't do this. So one of the, it's, uh, we put it into uh, uh, twenty, by year, twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm not trying to insult your intelligence, you can see that. But one of the things that I like to look at is if you go diagonally, so that, that group that was seventh grade, that sixth grade is two years ago. They went from thirty-four to forty-one, and they, they kind of topped out last year. Um, last year for eighth grade was the first year of the amplified curriculum, so uh, unlike elementary school, elementary school folks, I think they were really excited to have a new curriculum. Secondary folks are the masters of their domain and their, their, their curriculum specialists, so we're having a harder time having them deviate from what they're comfortable with and the novels that they do and all the things. So we saw it like, they, they dipped their toe in, but they weren't completely committed to it, so we're, we're seeing uh, some growth in that, but still like, they're very comfortable with what they're comfortable with. So we're, we're, you know, like I said, we're having some adjustment with the math, I mean, not with the math, but with the reading. Um, and again, so if you look for uh, last year's uh, seventh graders, they, they're, they're growing, but they're just not growing as much as we, you know, as much as we wanted. We had a pretty tremendous year that, uh, two years ago, um, and Ms. Parsons, Ms. King and I, um, when we have our instructional leadership meeting, one of the things that we talked about was that this year, um, specifically with our E C staff, it was the most consistent year that we, that we had with E C, so we weren't able to do some different things with grouping our kids. And we feel like that made the, the most, uh, it made the biggest difference in that second year, um, when we were there. So we're going back and looking at some of those things and looking at the groupings, but um, we definitely um, hit some walls last year. Um, sixth grade did best, sixth grade, and it's hard to compare cohorts, because they have their own personalities, but sixth grade consistently has gotten a little bit better every year, and of the group that used to amplify the best, it was definitely our sixth grade cohort. Like they, they jumped in and they, and they did it pretty much with fidelity. Um, but we're talking about a group that came in, they came in at like twenty, twenty-eight percent. So to get them up to thirty-seven percent was, was pretty solid. So you've already started, Dr. Robledo. So some strengths, uh, our sixth grade that continued their, their uh, trend of growth. Um, our eighth grade cohort increased their proficiency rate in both reading and math. Talking about areas of incre, uh, areas of improvement, there was a sharp decrease, and that's not right, that can't be right. Cause our eighth grade cohort didn't increase their proficiency and then also dropped their proficiency, so that second one isn't right. But there was a sharp decrease from the fifty-four, fifty-one percent to forty percent last year. Some of that's cohort dependent, and again, that was talking about the amplify, like the, the not being fully committed to the amplify, and also not being comfortable enough to do their stuff, because they were held, held responsible for doing amplify. Um, so we've noticed a three-year downward, downward trend, and it, a, a lot of it comes with core. Um, you know, strengthening the core, and like I said, when you have, we have two eighth grade teachers, and when you have them teaching very differently, very different materials, very different, it's hard to compare and, and keep them aligned. So the amplify piece, like I said, we're, we're having a, we're, we're having some, some meetings, and we're, we're meeting more regularly with them to get them more aligned with what they're teaching. Um, but um, again, sixth grade, they, they improve, upper grades are showing decline, so again, we think it's a, a core issue. But also looking at, um, we've had more, we, we, as an instructional leadership team, we normally just have our leadership. It's myself, Ms. King, Ms. Parsons, and our uh, um, our counselor, Ms. Williams. But we've added an additional meeting where we have our instructional leadership team, where we're just talking about what we're seeing in the classroom, and that's something that we hadn't done as much. We talked about it in those meetings, but we're very specifically talking about data this year, which I think has done improved not only um, our ability to go in and walk through and evaluate what we're seeing, but also their practice, that we give them more flexibility with that. Um, so weekly uh, E L A data meetings, and you'll see this with E L A math and science. Um, we also got accelerated reading this year, so we're trying to, middle schoolers notoriously don't read, that, and, and we're trying to incentivize it a little bit by trying to bring in accelerated rigor and, you know, to reach their goals, and you know, we can, we can do this. So we're trying to increase reading for joy, but just reading just in general. Um, and then again, using informative data, we, we, uh, the C F As give us another data point that we didn't have before. Uh, so that they're all, they're assessing on the exact same thing, so we can see whether um, the areas of growth are needed. For math, um, kind of the same thing, our sixth grade is our, has been our most consistent, but they had our most veteran, they had the same staff all three years thus far. Um, we did have to, we did, you know, do some movement around this year, just because we felt like fit was better. Um, our seventh grade last year, that was a core issue, uh, we felt like that they spent, um, we needed to strengthen core, is what we'll say. Core needed to be strengthened, um, there needed to be, and we met growth, so if, if I'm talking about a strength, we met growth everywhere. We just, the proficiency has to improve, and again, that's, they're, they're being assessed on very low standards, so we can't spend as much time on, you know, um, on fundamental stuff. Um, so that's, like I said, that's one of the areas where we need to grow. Our peak performance in, in math was in, was two years ago, and we felt like, again, we had an inclusion teacher at that time that was, she was super, super strong in math. And we ended up losing her earlier in the year last year, so it definitely changed. Not only did we do the grouping so that it benefited her, when we lost her, it kind of threw things into a lurch, so there's, there's some, um, some staffing stuff that, that threw that into a lurch. Uh, but each level shown, um, we've, we've made, we've met growth over the last, we exceeded last year, met growth last year. Um, second grade, seventh grade has historically been a high-performing group, so this group is in seventh grade this year, we're expecting to see, we expect us to see a tremendous jump for them this year and improve that seventh grade proficiency score. Um, so various for improvement, um, just inconsistency. Um, and we, math is the, one of those places that's really hard to, it's hard to find the math teachers. Um, I'm a performed math teacher, so it's really hard sometimes when I go in the classroom and not see good math instruction. Um, so we've had, we, we're constantly robbing Peter to pay Paul and put people in places uh, where there's weakness, but like all of us, the longer you stay in a subject, or the longer you stay with something, the better you're going to get at it, and you know where the holes are. So um, hopefully, we, you know, um, we're still trying to hire an eighth grade math person now, we have one of our uh, exploratory teachers teaching eighth grade math until she goes over to Mr. Robledo, and so we're in the process of hiring an eighth grade math teacher now. So I'm hoping that um, that all processes, we can find that level of consistency that we need. Um, but uh, implementing targets, uh, target small group instruction, um, and split school grouping. Um, you know, if a kid knows something, we don't need to leave them in this, in this group for long, like they need to, and that's what, with the C F As and with the uh, more consistent interaction with data, whether they're able to move kids in and out of groups based on need, and then they're small groups, and at, at the end of the day during our tag time. Um, math P D, uh, and again, weekly conversations, so Ms. So Ms. Parsons is doing the ELA, I'm doing the math, so I have my math data moved tomorrow with all three grade levels. And we're doing that weekly to look at, you know, uh, what, what the assessments were from the previous week, what standards are, the, the emphasis at this time, what they need to know, what they know and how we're gonna get there. So, um, I think, like I said, those more routine check-ins, um, is gonna hold not only them accountable for what they're supposed to be doing, but also us accountable as administrators and evaluators, uh, with, uh, checking in with them. Um, and this last part was assessing class roster. There, we, we let things, uh, go first quarter and we saw some, some really good things. But there's some things that we also need to adjust. So we had a, had a meeting today and we're gonna look at moving some kids and some folks around and even adjusting some of our, uh, our EC schedules, some of our social skills. Uh, to make sure that we're, uh, subject and need them all of our kids. Um, science data, uh, again, like, uh, Mr. LaChant said earlier, it wasn't renorming year last year and we got fifty percent, um, in a year where we weren't completely comfortable with the standards and weren't exactly, um, sure, the, the test even changed. There were parts of the test that was less vocabulary than it had been in the past. So it's changing the way that this, um, that Ms. Lilly's teaching. Uh, the thing that she did do last year that she hadn't done the previous years was that she met growth. Okay, and I, I thought that was important. Um, but, uh, let, let me ask a quick question.
She didn't make growth, they didn't make growth the year before?
Did not make growth the year before?
Well, the scores are a lot higher, why did they not make growth?
Yeah, that proficiency and growth, so when you're, when you're talking about growth, they're comparing them, like they're comparing me and Enoch to our peers, uh, across the state. So I can be more proficient, but if I didn't grow the same rate as a, as a similarly tested, similarly tested peer, then I didn't meet growth. So if, if he and I have a similar testing history and he tested, you know, what I scored a. A ninety-five percent time I scored a seventy-five, I didn't meet growth.
Okay, okay.
But you did a great job explaining that, so it's not eighty-six.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
But the state is looking at revising the growth piece. Um, so that is, uh, it was at the last state board meeting.
Changing it to twenty, something else.
Changing it all together and like not even making use of math, looking at a different, totally different, um, measurement for evaluating growth.
Um, so just in terms of the growth, we, it kinda like Mr. Robledo mentioned, two years ago, we went to the, uh, math year long, but it was AB schedule, so they were getting it the ninety minutes every other day. This year we would, and, and that worked, they, kids retained information more over the course of the years than they will. It's no different than reading and math, I don't know why we would do it any differently. But, um, what we've done this year, our, uh, our eighth grade team is really strong, they're really tight knit. Uh, Mr. Baldwin teaches social studies for us. So he and Ms. Lilly, instead of doing AB days now, they're doing, um, schemes. So they'll, the ninety minutes, they're breaking into two forty-five minute blocks. She'll teach him, uh, science co- uh, core and then he layers it up with vocabulary work. So they work really closely. And so, because what we initially planned to do was move a science teacher up to eighth grades, so that they have science year long. Um, and she, she begged, like they work so closely together that I, I trust them to do what they're supposed to do. And anytime you go in there, they're, they're working very well in elaborate groups. So, uh, we're looking forward to seeing, um, that take any benefit of the game. Um, uh, so that was, I was talking about next steps already. Um, but just incorporating reading comprehension and vocabulary development, uh, and data interpretation in science lessons and making it more hands-on. I know this, when Ms. Lilly and I talked, she talked about, uh, she, when she envisioned teaching science, she envisioned doing more hands-on stuff. And I was like, I, I, I haven't stopped you, like let's, let's get it going. So she's already done a couple of experiments this year. I think kinda like Mr. Robledo said, I'm sorry I'm stealing all your, your information, but from the hands to the head, like the more they can do with their hands, the more they're gonna retain it. So, um, she's, she, like I said, she's gonna really be done, we're proud of the work she's done and looking forward to in, in, improving the proficiency this year. Um, we did notice a drop, uh, in our subgroups. Um, and again, the, the only subgroup that didn't drop significantly or didn't drop a great deal were our MLs, which we, we have a, I think we probably have the highest ML population, uh, maybe outside of the high school. Um, but also our multiracial students, that's misleading because there's only like twenty-one of them. So, um, but, um, like I said, I think part, part of our, part of the strength that we had a couple of years ago was the groupings. And we gotta go back and look at making sure that we're doing much better for kids by, by, by adjusting our groups. So that's something that we're talking about going up here the next couple, uh, the next week or so. Um, celebrations, um, we generally start with these in our, in our meetings. Um, but we've seen a, 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 a big jump in parent engagement, uh, over the last couple of years, uh, and even this year. Um, last year we had a one-member PTO, this year we have like six to seven folks that are coming. So I think that's, that's tremendous, six to seven. But we, so we've seen a, 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 a jump in our PTO, um, and also greater participation, and I think for Thursdays, uh, we do our quarterly, um, our quarterly award ceremonies. And I have pictures from last week and the, the gym was pretty packed with parents, you know, coming to celebrate their kids. And I think that's important. Uh, we recognize perfect attendance, um, uh, at our award ceremony, just about half of our kids. So we have four fifty, I think it was like two hundred ten of them have perfect attendance per quarter. So, um, the far, half the battle is just getting them to school. Um, and like I said, that was, that was, that was great. Um, I think the data conversations, you know, we're used to having them after check-ins and after EOGs, but having them more regularly on CFAs and on just, you know, any, any, um, common assessments that they're taking is gonna really strengthen our, our reliance on data, which is what's gonna get us, you know. We worked a lot on culture, culture, culture a lot of the time. Now we've gotta, we've got to coach these and now we gotta get back to, you know, improving instruction. Um, school-wide initiatives, we're, we're still, we, we try to have, we, we try to have a good time too. Um, with our SEO, um, Ms. Williams is going in the classroom and she, and she's teaching, um, uh, character education lessons. He's a second step and even the curriculum that she, um, that, well, based on the needs of our kids. Like our sixth graders may not need necessarily the same things that our eighth graders need. Uh, but also our, our clubs, our kids love club day. Um, that's what we have, like myself, I have golf club, um, and I have my golf club when I have golf club. Um, but it's where we get it, Ms. King, I'm laughing, Miss. Um, but, uh, Ms. King has like a community service club where they go and they do our, they fix up our Shane's closet. Um, so Ms. Parsons, you're, it stems, Ms. Parsons does stem. So every adult in our building has a club and kids sign up for it and we take them and we have a good time with them once a month and they're lobbying for it, um, more often. They've actually, this group has done better than any group I've had as far as that goes, cause I think they just like having a good time. But, um, so like I said, we're just trying to create a, an inclusive, respectful culture. Um, and we talked about, uh, instructional leadership teams and using data more specifically to inform our decisions.
And East Middle School has the largest FCA audience?
We do, yeah, we do. Every, every week on Thursdays, uh, in the afternoon during our tag time, um, we have, uh, John Green comes over, Michael Green, John Green. Michael Green, I was right. Uh, Michael Green comes over and they, they do FCA and it, the, the gym is, is pretty packed now. Everybody that's there is not trying to get Jesus, they're just trying to get out of class. But, um, we, we're, we're having to, but just by, most of sometimes, like just by being in there, um, we, you know, we've had a, a really good participation and the kids really do a good job, um, of, of respecting. Like I, I, you don't, you don't have to be an athlete, you don't have to be a Christian, you just have to come here and respect, you know, everybody else's belief in those things. And it's been really positive, um, uh, it's been really positive to see. And we've seen some kids, you know, really talk, you know, be willing to share their, their faith, um, which has been pretty cool too.
What is it, FCA?
FCA, fellowship of, fellowship.
FCL?
Oh, social emotional learning?
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought, but it's part of, you have a club, it was in the philosophy, that's where I was.
Yeah, just, um, just to focus on the social emotional piece. Um, you know, students, they can, they can, uh, send a, we have a, a form that they fill out because everybody needs to talk to our counselor about something. So we have a fill out a form, she has allocated time where she pulls them and talks to them about whatever issue it is. We're trying to get to the point where, you know, we have a lot of kids with a lot of similar needs. Uh, being able to take those, take those similar needs and, and form groups, so that students feel like they're not alone. Um, so, but that's, we're, we're, we're getting that off the ground, we haven't quite gotten that yet. We're, we're putting out the daily fires is what we've got right now, but, um, that's what we're looking forward to.
Also, too, FCL, we, we focus on hallway conversations, classroom conversations, what's due this weekend. We'll sit like, not, it, it doesn't necessarily have some plans, but I know that your name is Cindy and you have a next gen at home. I got, just the culture because.
I know it was social emotional learning, I just wondered if it was a initiative or a club.
Yeah, it's trying to be more, um.
Positive that we have, we're people.
More.
That is very preventive.
Yeah, it, yeah, and, you know, it opens a lot of doors that pass, but.
True.
It is one.
Yeah, I know kindergartners share everything, but middle schoolers aren't that, oh, they aren't, they aren't locked off by each other. They're comfortable, you can just learn some stuff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, East Middle, everybody did a wonderful job. Thank you all for hanging in here with us this evening. And, uh, we love to continually, um, and making sure that we are well aligned so that when we get even better results, we will be aligned with the results that we are going to get. Um, so with that being said, we're gonna finish up this people attendance update. But, um, this month, for November, is Native American Heritage Month. Also, we have our Veterans Day Parade on eleven eighth. And we have asked all schools to participate or show some love to our veterans in our communities. Also, we will be celebrating Thanksgiving, so our teachers I'm sure are looking forward, and all educators in the room are looking forward to Thanksgiving break. Um, I, to our school board members, we will have the North Carolina School Board's annual conference, looking forward to that. And spending dedicated time together for November twelfth through the fourteenth. Um, Ms. Davis will also be attending, there's a special session for board clerks, um, so she'll be joining that group. And then we will also be presenting, uh, thanks to Mr. Allman, who put together, um, our presentation for this year. So we will have a breakout session where we are, um, highlighting our career and tech, technical education expansion through innovative partnerships. We have had a lot of school districts ask questions about how we can CTV at the middle school level. So kudos to all of you all. And then on November twelfth, uh, we have a special invite by different county schools. We're gonna have a catered reception for board members, mostly all of the board members that are either a member of TIC or the PMA, uh, triad consortium, they will be serving us dinner and they will also provide us with a school tour of their newest innovative school, PEC Expeditionary Learning School. Um, and then Wednesday, um, Wednesday, November twelfth, we have that session from six to eight. And then on Thursday, we will do our dinner together, um, of the board. Are there any questions? Thank you, but for, moving on now to run number six, closed session. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight one one, the board will now be in a closed session for the following committed purposes, to discuss confidential personnel matters and to consult with legal counsel regarding any matter checked under eternal client privilege. These discussions are necessary to protect the privacy of individuals and to conserve the legal interest of the board. A motion to enter closed session is now in order.
A move.
Mr. Voder, second. Second, Ms. Taylor, all in favor?
Uh.
We have action items for consideration of approval, the budget amendment, and the state of North Carolina need-based grant that we heard earlier tonight.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendment and the need-based grant.
Right. Second, motion by Ms. Epp, second, Mr. Dozier, all in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to Roman numeral number eight, consent agenda for consideration of approval. And first I will entertain a motion for the meeting minutes for October 6th and the work session minutes for October 23rd.
The move.
Mr. Dozier, second, Mr. Blake, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, number, letter C, I need a motion for approval of the personnel report.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Epp, second, Mr. Dozier, all in favor.
Aye.
Personnel report. Next, I'll entertain a motion for the low performing school plans for Candor Elementary in Green Ridge, Mount Gillett Elementary, Troy Elementary, Bay Street Elementary, West Middle School, and East Middle School. The move.
Aye.
Ms. Smith makes motion, Mr. Blake seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And so we have approved the low performing plans from each of those listed schools. And I will now entertain a adjournment motion. Mr. Dozier, second, Ms. Taylor, all in favor.